If it looks like a duck, it walks like a duck, this is residential development looking to become more of a residential development. Before we see anything, to Joan's point, that's concrete that says, wow, this is gonna be a commercial project. And uh. Which chapter are you in?
I'm in land use right now, under multifamily.
I think it was up in uh.
I think it was in 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 commercial.
Checking out. Yeah, there it is. Yeah, right there.
I think it was here, probable future trends.
Um. Um, go back up a little bit, I thought.
I think you're, I think it's land use.
Yeah, land use, multifamily, I think that.
No, no, commercial.
Commercial.
Commercial, was it this?
Uh.
Is it in the overview?
No, um, it was in that email that I copied and pasted you, I forget which chapter we got it from, I I thought it was Route sixty. Alright.
What's the gist of it?
The gist of it was just describing, um, you know, a hotel convention center that, you know, development off the highway that would, there you go. Channel future growth?
This was under recommendations, but.
What's that one?
Channel future growth.
Yeah, right there.
Yeah, I think this was it.
I'm not seeing the language, I I thought it was there, um. Well, I I did. To have a couple of things in our our P O C D, so I. Uh, I can find it, it's mine.
It was under, I would say it was under multifamily.
I thought it might have been under economic development, actually, chapter four. Um, casino. Uh, the part that I quoted was rebuilding exit seventy-four and rezoning the area to a planned commercial development area north of I ninety-five. Figure eighteen, so Gary, we're somewhere close to figure eighteen. Would help address the traffic problem. The new traffic flow design would take advantage of prime commercial property and improve traffic conditions in the Flanders area. The extension of East Society Road to the exit seventy-four development area would also make a convenient connection to the Dean Road area and to Flanders. This area is well suited for hotel slash conference center development to support adjacent high-tech industry and the proximity to the growing casino and tourism business and the biomedical expansion in New London provides a distinct advantage for this development. So if we were to update the P O C D right here, we could say that it's a shrinking casino business and a biomedical flight from New London.
There we go.
Because Pfizer's gone, so that would change that last phrase of a distinct advantage for development to a s- distinct disadvantage, in my opinion.
So, yours figure, your figure eighteen.
There we go. So, well, I just wanna, you know, we talked about what happens if s- if there's a significant change of circumstances. Um, our P O C D is being extremely precise about what factors will contribute to s- the success of the Gateway Plan Development District. They're enumerated right there, growing casino and tourism business, biomedical expansion, which in twenty fifteen are dragging our economy down here.
Well, there hasn't been much in the bio medical, um.
No, no, it's that was, that never came to pass.
And the casinos are clearly.
So I think the fear, the fear of our, of this commission, I think, would be that the planned development district just becomes a residential district accessible from East Society Road. And based on the applications we're looking at, that's all as far as we can see maintaining, um, yeah, in terms of being based on facts, based on plans that are submitted.
So, all good points.
Certainly.
Um. And I I certainly can appreciate the commission's fear. Again, you know, I don't know all the the behind the scenes, you know, with the developer, I obviously, you know, and Frank made it clear that as a result of what they were presenting, um, to the zoning commission, uh, they were heavily, you know, lobbying the residential component. Um, and and so I think it's rightfully so that the commission moves forward cautiously. With that said, I think, you know, certainly it's, you know, as the town planner, it's my intention to support the commercial growth in this district. So, I mean, I I I, cause that's the intent of the district, to have a mixed-use development. Our P O C D is littered with that language, mixed use. We even went so far to look at our incentive housing zones and and recommended that maybe we encourage the developer to put an incentive housing zone and to encourage affordable housing in that district.
So, you know, I, I mean.
You know, developer has indicated that he he was not interested in affordable housing, affordable units, um, but our P O C D suggests it.
Well, and an important aspect of the affordability was that you'd be near services and uh amenities that the town and infrastructure that's that's already existing in the town, which these uh apartments, as a result of being up that hill, uh, I would not describe them as walkable. So, I don't think it's quite this well-suited for.
Right. But I I think when you looked at the the initial concept plans, which you do have copies of, um, attached to the non-dated memo regarding the gateway history, you know, a layout like that, I think it was contemplated that there'd be sidewalks in throughout the neighborhood connecting to the commercial component. And I think, you know, again, we noted, um, my memo. I think I also handed out a copy, it was a memo from me to the commission. Back in two thousand twelve.
Yep, this is the one that's not staple.
Correct.
Yep.
Yeah, I I think the the commission understood that, you know, looking at, this was just an eight test twenty-four referral on the proposed improvements to East Society Road. Obviously finding that consistent because it would support this development. And when you read portions of the P O C D regarding, um, the exit seventy-four planned development district, um, you know, again, this reiterates the fact that the extension of East Society Road to exit seventy-four development area would also make convenient connection to the Dean Road area and to Flanders. Uh, and it did say, like you picked up on the hotel conference center development to support adjacent high-tech industries, which obviously haven't been here, but nonetheless, I think the, you know, the P O C D is suggesting if this development is to go forward, we need that road connection. And unfortunately, the the circumstances are that the developer's saying the only way to get that connection is to permit four more buildings.
We gonna take a bond for the road?
Well, according, if you look at the the proposed regulation, suggests that it would either be bonded or constructed. Or maybe it's partially constructed and then bonded. You know, those those are the the possibilities that are out there. Um, you know, you should consider that as, you know, maybe they only do the residential, bond the rest of it. But if that was the case, um, then the town would be in there building this road. So I would certainly think that that bond would include design. It would have to, cause the town's not, you know, we we don't, with the current level of services we currently provide, you know, I, not to say that they're not qualified to do it, but the town just doesn't have the resources to design that road the rest of the way, as well as construct it. I mean, we went through this kind of similar scenario with the orchards, right? So.
We might get good at it.
We might get good at it, keep us busy, um, you know.
Take us a different direction for a second?
Sure.
When the uh, the plan was approved in two thousand seven, two thousand eight, and and the town decided two seventy-five was the number instead of four hundred, I would assume that this entire district, this revision to the zoning regulations that was made for this developer with this developer's involvement, went through wetlands and all sorts of arms of our town government?
It 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 was just the the regulation change in two thousand.
So, there was no, the two hundred eighty units at some point?
So it didn't. Two hundred eighty units did get reviewed by the inland wells, it had, the way they built that, they had to have, they had regulated activities.
And that would apply with the four hundred, or the additional one twenty, it would go through a whole nother, uh.
If there are any, yes, additional regulated activities, and according to the developer, there there will be. And it's because of the the location of the the units, um, see if I can.
Cause a lot of, my my, where I'm going with this is, I mean, a lot of people put a lot of time into coming up with that number with a lot of things being considered, and and this is essentially an administrative change to three digits of that document. Two eight zero, it used to be two seven five, turns to four hundred, and the whole world changes. And although it's a fiscal, fiscal, um, windfall for the developer, I think it's a long-term fiscal obligation and drain on the fiscal health of the town of East Lime without what was promised. Perhaps after the commercial comes in, then there's an impetus and a and a celebration and a win for this other residential phase, if that's what people want to think of it as, but this commercial was the reason for making the district. The residential was not, is there any doubt in anybody's mind about that? The reason for this district, the reason the developer had leverage to get in the door and rewrite or write a new chapter for our document was so we could get commercial in this zone. And I'm not gonna find that in the P O C D, but if we don't acknowledge that, we're missing the bus on this entire eight-year wonderful, as planned, initiative.
Well said, Frank.
Yeah, catch that one, please, it's on the tape.
We got a video.
No taking backwards.
We got a hi- highlight reel together.
No taking backwards.
Uh, well, I will say this, it's an hour and a half in, we usually do our comfort break. Why don't we take a quick break?
I concur.
Yeah, come back.
It's all good.
Not uncomfortable.
Thank you.
Okay, this meeting is back in session. Uh, time is eight thirty-seven. We are deliberating on the zoning referral. And we're looking to bring all our minds together with a motion.
I, I mean, a- a- as a, you know, and I think, I I think as it pertains to commercial development in the Gateway District, which our P O C D, I think, does support, it does say it, um, on page sixty-seven, as recommendations, um. It says channel future commercial growth toward Route one sixty-one.
Can we do it, can we do it up here, Gary?
Oh, sorry, yeah, um, I was just looking for, uh, have you moved the American flag to the left? Oh, because this is not tabbed in pages, um, it's a little more. Give me a second, gotta find it.
It's okay.
I think this is in. Commercial three point two. Alright, so I'm in commercial districts.
Yep, it's page sixty-seven, but it's, it's a three point two commercial.
Be under the recommendation, that might be under here. Land development district.
Well, point, point O Woods is right across, that's in O'Leary.
Yeah, I don't, I'm gonna have to talk to Ethan about this.
I'm sorry, then, you could read it out.
I'll just read it, how does it?
Since you had it in Freddie.
It's, uh, under, on page sixty-seven, under recommendations, number one, channel future commercial.
What, which chapter are we in, recommendations?
Chapter three, which is, uh.
Land use?
Land use.
Land use, and it's specific to three point two commercial.
Okay.
Channel future commercial growth toward the Route one sixty-one, I ninety-five interchange area. Uh, it talks about the predominance, uh, the preponderance of commercial development in the future should take place around exit seventy-four. Interchange adjacent to the interstate I ninety-five in conjunction with new development or redevelopment in the Flanders commercial district. As documented, a substantial amount of land is available in the Route one sixty-one corridor for commercial growth. And thi- this is what I'm, I'm, I keep getting hung up on myself, is removal of multifamily housing development as a permitted use would remove pressure for development of commercially zoned land for non-commercial uses. Um, additionally, the area is attractive for further commercial development because of its location with respect to transportation corridors and accessibility to the central and northern areas of town, where most future residential development would take place. Yeah, there's another, a bullet to follow that talks again about, uh, several potential impacts involved with the intensification of commercial use in the Route one sixty-one interchange area, and that would be an increase in traffic congestion on one sixty-one. However, it was considered preferable to accept the high traffic volumes here and to make necessary roadway improvements within a limited area than to aggravate problems and trigger more extensive and costly improvements by permitting further strip development elsewhere.
Well, well, can you, can you say that one more time, that sentence right there?
However, it is considered preferable to accept high traffic volumes here.
Yeah.
That's meaning Route Route one sixty-one.
Yeah.
And to make the necessary roadway improvements within a limited area than to aggravate problems and trigger more extensive and costly improvements.
To me.
By permitting further strip.
What is being proposed right now is a new bridge and four new off-ramps. Which to me sounds like the, instead of we're gonna accept the high volume and just go with it, that it sounds like we've crossed, we've crossed over into, we are doing, I can't think of a more expensive way to do it, right? We're gonna rebuild the whole bridge, add lane to ninety-five, and take all four off-ramps and reconfigure them. Is there a bigger way to do that job?
And and six lanes underneath the, the overpass.
And six lanes on one six one.
Right. Don't forget that.
So.
Well, I mean.
Is, what is the plan of conservation and development advising, that we do the costly improvements and reconfigure everything, or not?
Well, I I think what it's saying is, is you don't want strip development, so is, I I think what they're saying is.
What would be an example of strip development here?
Multiple access driveways as opposed to the big entry.
Okay.
Right, and and so you're going deep into a property with commercial development, you're gonna have commercial development one sixty-one right now, but just extend it, you know, continue to extend it further down one sixty, in both directions, that type of thing would have been this strip development, and you'd get things like Midway Mall. Um, even what was down here in the in the downtown, what was previously the I G A building, had multiple entrances which have subsequently been, some of them have been, uh, corrected with the streetscape project, so.
Right. I I just feel like it's a catch twenty-two when when we get into this traffic stuff, because on one hand, traffic's not good now. We, there's room for improvement, but the way we're gonna improve it is to tear it all up for years and then intensify the use on four different dimensions, it's gonna be more residential, there's gonna be more commercial, and there's gonna be a different kind of, so I I, will that leave us, is is there anybody who's telling us, hey, in five years, the traffic is gonna hum?
I mean, we had the traffic studies from the developer that that say that, you know, that are based on four hundred units and the commercial, you're gonna need this road, East Society Road, to go through, we need, gonna need the highway interchange. D O T has made it clear that with Costco, just that one building alone, it's gonna require new highway ramps, so that that's, so if Costco does come, it, that will happen.
Is that the official story now, or, cause the other narrative is that those ramps are gonna change?
Well, you're gonna get, with Costco, you you're gonna get initially temporary ramps, because it will change. It's just, you need to be able to get on and off the highway, and right now Costco is in the way of those ramps, so you have to get temporary ramps to get people on and off.
Okay, I just wanted to, there there seemed like that that in the P O C D, they were trying to weigh one approach versus the other?
Yeah.
And I think we're firmly on the rebuild everything side of the fence.
I I think that's the direction, cause it it's just rebuilding within this area rather than rebuilding elsewhere in town, having to accommodate, you know, one sixty-one, if we had to expand one sixty-one.
No, that's a separate issue, but, yeah, and then a a subsequent issue would be exit seventy-five closing.
Closing that exit, yeah, that was the other issue.
Mr. Gosham?
Yes.
Um, as of the requests for more units, on a letter dated May seventeenth, two thousand seven, the last paragraph, it is further noted that the proposed allowed density for residential housing of three units slash acre slightly exceeds the recommended density in the plan of conservation and development. Now, originally, the town restricted to two seventy-five, yes, five more units. It was presented as excess space, but this is a whole different ballgame.
Well.
Well, and and Joan, if I can just piggyback on that, she's, she's quoting this three ac- three units per acre, per acre slightly exceeding the recommended density, is that for the two hundred eighty units? In which case, could we update that figure for the four hundred?
No, two thousand seven was for the initial, I believe, the initial adoption of the regulation.
Okay.
Two thousand eight, I'm sorry.
But you, in order to come up with their two point seven units per acre, there was a unit, I can, I mean, I can figure it out.
Um, March two thousand seven, I believe, was the, the approval of the initial regulation. May seventeenth, two thousand seven, there was a revision, and my guess was, I know, well, I was here for the the additional five units, so I'm not sure exactly what the. Um, I'm not sure what specifically the, the regulation change was in two thousand seven, I can, I have the file here, if if need be. And it, based on the the, the four hundred units, based on the acreage now, um, would bring the density to two point nine units. So, this indicating three. Um, my, maybe, they were contemplating in this May sixteenth, two thousand seven letter, four hundred units, bringing it to three units per acre, if you took the two point nine and you rounded it up, because nobody has point nine, nine tenths of a unit, so. Um, you know, and and then the recommended two point seven, so are we still rounding up, or do we do, you know, uh, and I certainly don't know, I'd have to go back and look at that P O C D, cause that's prior to the. because that's prior to the adoption of, of the one that we're using now, um, to look up that density and where it specified that that development, the, the Gateway Plan Development should have that density. The other thing I would like to note, uh, in that same letter, uh, about midway in the paragraph where it begins, in addition, just as the area west of the Patagonia River within the G P D D meets the citing criteria for multifamily housing recommended in section three of the plan of conservation and development. And that subject was made, that finding was made subject to the submission by the applicant of fiscal impact analysis to ensure that the concept plan will generate increased tax revenue for more than sufficient to offset increased cost of services. Now, again, just like their impact analysis in two thousand and eight, which is subsequent to this, it makes an assumption, that assumption being that the commercial be, be constructed. So, uh, I, I mean, I certainly, you know, I can see the, the dilemma here, and, and unfortunately, the, the circumstances are what they are. And, you know, I, I wish the developer could hold off on this request, wait until Costco comes, and then come back to us with something like this.
Right, and then, and again, working within the framework of Town Hall, we are filing a report, which is to be an asset for zoning to make their decision, and they're the ones making this decision. So I think we need to make sure we have our planning hat on, and we're looking at our P O C D, and we're weighing out, how, how this commission, what, what this commission is.
Right, I mean, other, otherwise, I would have said the, the developer might as well have applied for an S U zone.
Right.
Or an affordable housing district. But they didn't want to do affordable, so S U would be the alternative for multifamily housing. And whether or not they would achieve the same density, I don't know, under the multifamily reg.
Let's just do a thought experiment, what if, what if, uh, we, tonight passes, comes and goes, the numbers, this, we were to find it, um, let's say zoning were to approve it, regardless of what action we take, and they end up with four hundred, and then next year we get a, uh, another hundred units. They apply again, they say, okay, you know how we crossed out the two eighty, we put the four hundred, we're running the numbers, we need four fifty. Need that other building. Now zoning's gonna have their criteria, planning's gonna have ours.
We would.
Right?
The, the sense that I'm getting is that the, the, the commission is kind of in a consensus here that it's not a hundred percent consistent with the P O C D. Had they built commercial, that would be consistent with not only the zone, but with our plan of development.
We haven't seen it, we don't have anything in here.
If, if this commission finds that it's inconsistent, and moving forward, the, the zoning commission approves it, they need a two-thirds vote to, to make that, approve that regulation change. And then moving forward, they come back with fifty units, I would suspect that the commission would then look back at their historical approvals and findings of consistency and say, well, we, oh, the additional units, we found inconsistent because there was no commercial developed. Now let's say they build out the commercial, and then they come back and say, well, we, we want to increase not only fifty, but another four hundred units. Bringing the density up to six units per acre.
Yeah.
Which is, in, in terms of the overall picture, three units per acres is like equivalent to the R ten or R twelve zoning district, that type of density.